In this planning process, how would you like to provide input as the Chamber Board, with the work of staff and some of the other public funders try and figure out what the appropriate financial and governance structures are going to be?
Anyone? I'll offer a suggestion. I know that you've made an effort to have one-on-one conversations with many of the council members, and I don't know if it might be a possibility then to get a small group working with you on a periodic basis, because I think that what you're saying, that consistent, continuous kind of conversations would be helpful. I don't know if that's a possibility, a small task force, because it is not short duration, but it's a finite goal that you're working towards, as I understand, towards the end of '08, beginning of '09 for this plan.
Okay. The previous, I'm looking at the earlier draft. Has it changed since then? Do you have an update?
Things that we didn't get done in with the group that, you know, we had together as a leadership group, we took out and thought, okay, this is a...
Okay, I thought that was pretty productive. I know it was a hard time getting a lot of people in one place at the time. The other aspect would be actually bringing everybody up in council of what structures exist right now, whether it is the CIC or the Port Authority, and where they overlap and where they don't overlap, a synopsis for those of us who don't know it all.
Sure. Well, I don't know it all, but I can give you a short answer. And nobody in the industry knows it all, because I've tried to ask the questions a million times, what works. You go around to every county just surrounding us, and you will see a different model. One may be a community improvement corporation, one may be a port authority, one may be a Chamber of Commerce, and so each of them operates very differently. And, you know, I talked to one of my fellow economic developers from Pickaway County. He had been working in the Port Authority in Toledo and Lucas County, and now he's working for Community Improvement Corporation in Pickaway County that sort of acts as what we're talking about doing as a kind of umbrella organization to pull everybody together to work collectively, collaboratively. I got his answer on what she prefer, and he said a community improvement corporation. I got an answer from a friend of mine that works in Marietta for the Port Authority there, and he said, I prefer a port authority. So it's, you know, it's all over, and it depends on what you want as a community. But what I could do is we have an analysis put together about community corporations and port authorities, I could share that with council so you get an idea of what those individual things are, and then maybe the other side, which would be what private, public, private council, you know, elaborating council, you know, how do those work and what are the pros and cons? So is that what you were trying to talk about?
Yes, the limitations of each. Having a conversation with you, the CICs have limitations, the port authorities do not, they have tax liabilities, one does and does not, and then the other entities out there that fill the gap, whether it's ACE net and what they're doing in terms of innovation, what their scope is. And that's what, you know, just so they know the lay of the land, so how does this get built into it with what's here already? I mean, I'm sure Jim knows, and Nancy does, and Debbie.
I think the other thing that I'll do is go ahead and make sure new members have a copy of the existing contract, because what we changed in recent years, which I think has kind of helped improve some of the communications, is that the old chamber contract with the city was pretty spare. It just said, we'll give you money, go do economic development work. And in the last couple times we've been through that process, we spelled out a scope of services, so of, you know, what we expect for that money, so we had kind of a way to do some performance measurement and a sense of what we expected from the chamber, and just some clarity in the relationship. And so I'll make sure everybody has a copy of that, so that as you move through this planning process, we'll have a chance to look at that and see, you know, what pieces of that work are proposed to be done by the new structure, and, you know, where may there be some gaps, and, you know, just to help us kind of compare what's going on now with what's being proposed. But, you know, I think that, I would encourage folks to take a little time, because I got a chance to see a draft of this about a week ago, and I think there's some solid planning work that's been done by the Chamber Board already. I think this is a really thoughtful process that you're engaged in, and, you know, I just ask that you kind of keep us in the loop, so we're not at the end of the year all of a sudden having to assimilate a lot and figure it out then.
And this is a tremendous transition for our board and our membership as well. So in terms of the communication piece, you know, nothing has been voted on within the Chamber Board as well, and what we're doing is working through a process, hopefully getting as much input from all the stakeholders as we can. I think for the Chamber too, you know, we've been very active through the Athens Uptown Business Association, and although we have identified specific sectors within the city and the county that we want to focus on, we recognize through the comprehensive plan process and just the interests of the city today that there might be other priorities you as council members see, you know. So is it more a participation with an Uptown Business District? Paul and I were in a meeting this afternoon with folks from Heritage, Ohio, talking about some of the changes to the Main Street program, you know. So there's a lot of different priorities that you as a council or as an administration might have for the city that maybe are not thoroughly reflected in some of our planning documents. So if you can anecdotally or, you know, in a more formal process, give us what you feel some of those priorities are in upcoming years, that would be helpful as well.
Jim?
I'd like to suggest that we consider coming back together in a work session format, where we seem to be more vocal and maybe able to talk to each other face-to-face, sitting around a table rather than this configuration. Also, in a committee, we still have lots to do on our agenda, and that's always on our mind, we need to get through the work, where if we focus on a particular subject and have a little more friendly setup, I think the conversation will be more forthcoming. So I don't know when that might be, maybe you're not ready for that in your process, maybe you want our input before you go any further, so it could be sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Well, thank you for the time you've taken with us tonight, and I will stop pressing.
No, 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 I'm not, I didn't even mean to hint that, I'm sorry. We do have more to do.
We're all used to me doing the ass.
I think that's a really good idea. I think this is, it's great to kind of have this on the table, folks can take a look at this, and then we can figure out another time to have another more in-depth discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have two miscellaneous items, they're really just announcements. One is that I got an email from the clerk about the lot split in the plains, where we had a question about 911 and the fire department, and they're fine with the lot split as long as they, as we have addresses and they know what they are in term, for emergency response, and the access through the alley to the back lot is adequate. So we did get that answer. And the other announcement is just a reminder that we have public hearings scheduled on May 19th for Beaumont Green and, I think, CDBG is, I don't remember exactly which CDBG, just the grant in general, I guess we have another hearing. So those are at 7:00 and 7:15.
It's my understanding, we have Mike Nolan, Jared Malika here from Rotary to discuss the wedding garden, I think, of the park. I communicated with the clerk and was told that they could present after the chamber's presentation.
Okay.
And I have one miscellaneous after that, too.
All right. Okay, so the wedding park. And you're welcome to come either up to this microphone or to the table, whichever you prefer.
I don't know. Putting this together, I'll just give you a brief history. It's actually, the Rotary has decided to change the name to Celebration Garden. It's become more widely used for a variety of activities, where calling it the wedding garden may have been a little bit too restrictive than what they might think use might be at that point then. It kind of developed about a year ago, maybe nine months ago, when the landscaping committee felt that there was a need for some additional landscaping trees placed somewhere near 555 East State Street. Unfortunately, they came about six months too late, because all the people who were involved with that project had built their facilities, being Applebee's and CBS and those, and they suggested that maybe a good location would be at the area behind the existing city lab building. Being that they were asking for about 12 trees, it seemed to our office, and General Architects, that it would provide a good opportunity of creating something that would be useful to the city, at the same time also a nice space for the general public to use to walk through. I don't know how many had the opportunity to visit the garden area behind the lab building, has anyone had that opportunity on this committee? Doesn't look like it. Well, you should. Oh, I guess has. It's right behind the restrooms. It's ideally located, because when you'd have an activity there, you have the city restroom readily available to it. It now connects Holiday Inn with the rest of the trail systems of East State Street Park, so we have approximately, we close to about 18,000 visitors who will be visiting Athens over a year that will have the opportunity of actually having a good communications between where they are as well as the park, instead of trying to somehow figure their way out onto East State Street, crossing at the light, walking down, crossing back over at the light to get to the community center. So it's a natural continuation of that. Upon hearing that the landscape committee wanted additional 12 trees, we immediately went to the rec board, or actually to, I don't remember which board we went to first, I think we may have went to the mayor and Ray Hazelit to start with, and made a presentation to them, then sent us to the rec board. And so we visited three different boards for approval on this, the rec board, the tree commission, as well as the mayor and the service safety director at the time we started doing it. So it just wasn't go out and start excavating and putting things up, we spent quite a bit of time in doing that. Since that time, oh, just drawing here, this upside down and sideways, and thought I'd give you this to you, go, is that thing? I'll go ahead and pass this around so you get a closer look at it. Just a quick aspect with, this is the location of Holiday Inn, this is the restrooms that now exist, this is the lab building, and then this is the proposed dog park that is going to develop, I guess, over the next six months, and right now it's been used for baseball, and enjoyable, I've spent a lot of Saturdays working and watched young college students play baseball, so it's kind of a nice mix. In the middle of the park is this structure here that has been built, which is basically a small open trail structure, it's the backdrop of any activity occurs, that has a power to it. The power was, will be approved tomorrow by the state inspection that came on Friday. We had not gotten into the restrooms to get the power turned on, so he's asked to come back and make the final inspection on that. There's also power now located on the back of the bathrooms, as well as a single pedestal outlet in the middle of the garden area, so that the idea would be in the winter that this could be lit up with Christmas or holiday lights to create some additional interest with that. Since we started it, the project, we've gone from 12 trees to over 25 trees. They're a mixture of sycamores, maples, pin oaks, flowering cranapples, and various pines, spruces, and those that have been added in with itself. And then also, we've started landscaping the different mounds that exist on both sides of the trail. The trail through it, the sidewalk is a brick pattern, pulling back some of the bricks of Athens with that, which adds some good texture to it, that's preformed, so it's not very rigid in its appearance, it's nice flow through it, and it's a nice space to visit with it then. It's also been a community project altogether, in the fact that we've had the Boy Scouts helping, Omega, Alpha Pi Sorority has been there helping, Rotary members have been there helping, and Interact, Rotaract, pretty much a wide variety. Anyone who has a strong rack and a weak mind, we'd invite them to come in to plant trees. And we even twisted the arm of one of the individuals on the tree commission to come, and she spent a morning with us, helping plant trees and stuff. You can pass this around, that's kind of the budget we have so far. We've expended close to $25,000 in expenses, $4,000 of that came from the Rotary Foundation, which was a combination of the Athens Rotary Foundation and the Rotary District, which is southeastern Ohio, both of them expended $2,000 with it then. And then there's been various different construction companies within the community who have also volunteered their time and their money in the endeavor at this point. There's a copy of that for each of the city council members, if you want to pass it on down. That's my presentation, that's kind of the history of what's happened over the last nine months at this time. I guess the next step is there is a need to revise the agreement or update the agreement that was put together by Kevin Swartzoff of Parks and Recreation. Initial conversations were that the Rotary Club would maintain the landscaping and the flower beds. As Kevin said, we have enough beds and planting areas on city recreation property to keep us busy as it is, and he asked that if we planted any flowers and did any beds, that we would be responsible for maintaining those, as well as planting the flowers. He'd indicated that the mowing could occur by the city, since they're mowing over at Dog Park and around the lab building in that area, so the city would mow with it, and that was kind of the initial conversation, so I'd be willing to answer any questions at this time.
And Paula, so you essentially want us to give some input as you are developing an actual, is this just a lease or a shared use agreement?
This original, do you all have a copy of what Kevin entered into, that he wasn't...
It wasn't legal, so we don't have a copy of it.
Right.
Gives you the basis.
In terms of a memo of understanding, and that's my, that's why I asked, it was my understanding you wanted Mr. Nolan...
Just as a point of order, shouldn't this be at the recreation committee meeting instead of the planning and development committee?
Again, it was my understanding that you had wanted to have Mr. Nolan present to council regarding how this all came about.
I don't know about that.
So that's why I've asked him here.
I would think it's a recreation matter, since they're going to be using recreation resources.
You know, I had a committee meeting scheduled, and I think that there was a request to try to, you know, get a more detailed agreement, and I think we just went ahead and then threw it on there, so, but it makes more sense to have it on recreation next time, I, that's absolutely fine.
You mean a council recreation, or are you talking about the recreation advisory task force?
Yeah, we do have a recreation group, and that would be a good place for it.
And also, well, you know, I'll tell you what questions I have. What's the area that we are dedicating to this use? And how does it relate to the fountain would be another question, but maybe I better not say that word. How is it booked? Is it, and who makes money on it, if anybody? And who's going to pay the electric? Is this a public space or is this a private space? Those are my questions. I don't need them answered now, but I don't know why sewer and water, which are relatively taxed, should pay for a park like this. What will be the term of the lease? I'll put those in writing if you want to see it later on, but that would certainly be questions that I would like to see answered. I would have liked to have heard about it sooner instead of now. I think many of us feel that way.
I thought this would be appropriate in planning development, because it is a lease agreement of some sort, whether it's a memo of understanding. Again, I understand the legality of it, it does not stand, because Kevin signed off on it as city representative. The elements that you're looking at there, they do need to be looked at, I mean, it is going to cost money if we maintain it, in terms of whether it's making the reservations to rent the space or paying the electric bill and removing the trash. I didn't know that the rec advisory board even saw this, but I, you know, I wasn't paying too much attention to the rec advisory board, my own council, and I know that up to this point, they did not have a director, so if they approved it, I haven't seen the minutes of it, I'll have to look at that. But again, you know, this is just to bring you up to speed on what's going on.
So essentially, a department head at the time signed off on this without really going through the process for entering into a lease agreement or memo of understanding?
I could go back and ask Rick and see if he's aware of it, maybe he is, but the document you have there says Kevin.
But this is all that we have as far as a formal agreement, is this...
That is the formal agreement. It's my understanding, it was reviewed by the service safety director and the mayor at that time, McGable. And again, I believe we had two city council people sitting on both of those committees, being the tree commission has someone sitting on that at the time, and I made a presentation to that group, and then the rec board also had Carol Patterson sitting on it. So, sorry, not all the council members had the opportunity of seeing it, but I do know at least two did, as well as the mayor and the service safety director at that time. Energy costs, we're playing around the idea that since our firm is strongly involved with sustainability in design and stuff, we're now looking at a flat opaque panel that could sit on top of the unit that would generate electricity for any nightlight of it then, and so we're also concerned about those areas, although I think your power usage is going to be minimal at the most with this. I do know that there are three weddings planned for it, all of them through the rec department, and our conversation was everything that would go through the rec department, and they would do the scheduling of people using it. I guess the first wedding is May 28th of this month, that is, if we can get rid of all the water, because there seems to be a whole bunch of water around Athens right now in that location.
So May 24th, a week from Saturday.
On May 24th? Okay. Maybe a little mushy.
And I think part of what you're, what you're hearing from council members is council needs to authorize leases, so if, you know, it, there may have been a couple council members aware of this, but, you know, we generally have to vote on, you know, authorizing the administration to enter into leases. So, I mean, it's, at this point, I think what we need to do is figure out how we want it to be managed and what the different responsibilities would be, and come up with a document that has a little bit more information than this memo.
I like that word that somebody used earlier, lessee. Who's the lessee? Who would be leasing it to?
That's my question. Right now, what we have in front of you is who is going to maintain what, and I think the rec board and Kevin Swartzoff is concerned about the flowers and the shrubs on the site, and then probably...
I guess it would still be ours.
Yeah, but no one's leasing the land.
Excuse me?
City property.
So there isn't really any lease involved?
Yep.
It's...
Except whoever leases it for exclusive use for a certain period of time.
Oh, okay, well, that kind of...
And the money then goes...
Goes to the rec board.
Like renting...
Rec department.
Like renting the community center there, or one of the shelters or something.
Yeah. I think we ought to go out and look at it.
Yeah, I, see, I haven't gone, because I didn't realize it was entirely on city property. I don't like to wander other people's properties, so, but it is, what we're seeing is all, it's all city property at this point.
Yes.
So are you saying that you got your landscaping permit by planting trees on city property?
No, I did not say that.
Oh, for your, for your parking lot?
No, I did not say that, because we follow the ordinance of landscaping.
Oh, the 12 trees, but tell me where that, how that came into...
I did not argue with the tree commission. I had more bigger fish to fry than get an argument about counting trees on that particular development. We met all the requirements of width of areas based on the number of cars and that. And granted, there were probably half a dozen trees out on East State Street, which run underneath the power lines, so you could not plant large trees there, and so we went to the crab apples. Again, the concept was, at one time, flowering crab apples was a dominant element driving down East State Street, there was a lot of discussion about when the East State Street was widening, we were going to lose those, and so we designed that there. After the fact, we get a memo from the tree commission saying, based on our calculations, we feel that you still owe us 12 trees. Well, this was after permits were issued on all four properties six months, and I said, I'm not going to argue. And where they suggested to put it, I thought was an excellent idea, so that's how that happened. And if I was going to argue, I wouldn't have planted 25 trees, because, and all being two- to three-inch calibers, those are not cheap trees that are set back there.
As a non-voting member of the tree commission, I do remember this development coming in front of us with the four different developments, and there wasn't enough room for the trees. There was discussion of consolidation, and there was the use of city right-of-way to offset those numbers of trees. Again, as a non-voting member, this, I may have tracked this, and say, wedding park or a celebration garden or party park, whatever it is, essentially, I did not really, as a non-voting member, put my two cents in, and I did not track it at the time. I do know that the tree commission did require more trees, because there weren't sufficient in terms of interior trees, especially between Applebee's and the future Oak Hill Bank, I believe. Something about trying to get the cars in between.
That was CBS.
CBS, was it?
CBS and Oak Hill Bank, there was, yeah.
So there was a need to put trees out in the exterior and in the city right-of-way. So we utilized city right-of-way to offset the need for trees.
So that was what the tree commission authorized? Agreed to, whatever? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know if they agreed to the wedding park, technically, they didn't track it. They did say, they did talk about consolidation. The tree commission's very accommodating, and I have no, had no desire to change that.
I still don't feel entirely clear about the response to Nancy's question, the trees that you talked about needing, was that part of what the tree commission was requiring? Are you saying they came back after the whole landscaping plan had already been in the room?
We had one discussion about the CBS access road or drive that provides access to the drive-up window, and if you, it was split between Oak Hill Bank and CBS, and if you could interpret the code the way it's written, that road should have two 10-foot-wide aisle landscape areas on both sides of it. Well, it just wasn't enough room for that particular case, so there was only room for one aisle next to Oak Hill Bank in that location. They then waived the requirement, in their interpretation, of adding another aisle for that. It was then later they came back and did an assessment of the whole properties, being Applebee's, Oak Hill Bank, CBS, and Holiday Inn, and took a land area based on percentage of coverage or something, I'm not quite sure where that's in the tree commission, but I didn't really care, because I feel trees are very beneficial to our environment, and to plant 12 trees helps that environment then, so, and that's when we came up with the idea, let's do something, because Rotary's always looking for activities that are good for the community, and they're always looking for a service project that they can be very visible in doing, and that's when the concept of... And that's when the concept of the wedding garden then developed with that. And the trees were planted in that location. All the trees were requested to be planted there already. What we basically did was to add a sidewalk through it so that people could walk through the trees if they wanted to.
My question is, classic accommodations, I assume, is the people or the corporation that owns the hotel. Can you clarify who that is or?
There are three partners. There's the gentleman, name of Jeff Albrecht, Dave Panage, and myself. We're the three who have ownerships of that. Although after nine months, the Holiday Inn classic accommodation really hasn't had much involvement in it. If you look at the spreadsheet on the cost, it has all been incurred by Panagenal Architects, which is somewhere close to $12,000.
I guess my.
And that's our gift to the city.
Thank you. I guess my question is, I, in some ways, see this as an early, not in addition to the hotel complex there, but provided and built to help attract potential customers to the hotel and to serve as.
I would, you know, it's, I've heard people argue that, but the hotel only has three meeting rooms, not big enough to put on a wedding reception. Yes, there may be someone who might come and say, hey, did you see this celebration park? You have a hotel next to it. Hey, can we have our wedding here and put up a tent and then spend the night there so we don't have to go out on the streets or something? That may happen, who knows? It hasn't happened yet. The three weddings that are set up are all through the rec department with at this point. What I do think it does, it does provide an area for those guests at the hotel to walk to the rest of the park systems, walk their dogs, to walk through, to go back to the skate park this summer, to go to the swimming area. And I think that is, if it's a benefit, it's a benefit of safety because we have a lot of young children staying there and they want to go over to the swimming pool in the evenings and stuff. They have a less pedestrian or a more pedestrian oriented access for them. So there is a plus there. And I think that's about the only plus I can see with the hotel at this time.
I will point out that the proposed dog park that's being built will be built there. And again, it's for the benefit of the city, but the Holiday Inn is considered a pet friendly hotel, so they will benefit them in some sense as well. But, you know, again, comes down to question, is it the general ambiance or is it, you know, specific? In all fairness, both the party park and the dog.
Yeah, absolutely. I see that.
Although if it had been put up revoked, there'd only be two parks for animals about town. One's allergic to them and sleep.
Two questions. The shown on the schematic here are a couple of pretty large Rotary symbols. Are they, is this going to be identified as a Rotary park?
Do you mean these things? Those are trees, those are indications.
These two at the end of the, one on each end of the pavilion?
That's a type of tree.
Well, that's a type of tree.
Those are just types of trees?
Those are actually maples. They're just a simple architectural symbol. Although Rotary would like to put a symbol on, would like to have a plaque that's coming into the park, which says this is a celebration garden donated by the Rotary Club with it. And there's been some discussion, they'd like to have a symbol on the trellis where this element here, small wheel mounted on the end. So if someone would be walking from the hotel that direction, they would see that symbol there. It could identify it as being given as a gift by the Rotary Club for that purpose.
The other question was maybe the service safety director. We have three weddings planned. The community center has worked out the fees and stuff? I mean, the picture, obviously, we're going to have guests wanting to sit on chairs. Do we rent the chairs?
I don't know the details of that. I do know that they rented similar to where they rent the shelter houses, which is really just a deposit fee. I'm assuming that's, would be the same case. And I do not believe we're providing any additional equipment in terms of.
I don't, not as if they wanted to get it. And it's reasonable to rent things from local vendors for chairs or weddings and stuff.
Nancy was just suggesting that we should try to do a little field trip and go look at this. She was suggesting that maybe the art, the day, the Tuesday, after Memorial Day, if we did a half an hour field trip before council. People be able to try to come a little bit early and we can just go look at it and, you know, get a better feel for how this works. And, you know, if it's not actually a lease, if it's just really kind of a shared maintenance agreement, then, you know, maybe there's not a whole lot that we have to work out here. But, yeah, we just need to see what we're talking about. Does that work?
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
A refreshment, sir?
You better run fast, try to.
You can get your car phones turned on in the bathrooms, you can have water.
Okay. More.
No.
I do, I do like your idea also of including the.
Sucker field, something. Sucker field restrooms. They're not at the, oh.
They probably turn on what's cool.
Take care of that. Move for the service safety director.
Mr. Noel, yeah, I do like the idea of adding solar panels as well or some sort of.
Yeah, my partner was in San Diego for a week last week at the conference. He sits on the National for Solar, as well as Windpower. And he said, one of the vendors had a flat white panel. So, you know, that's natural light through, doesn't shade it, and he knows a collector, so it's not a godly expensive. We may as well be working on that.
Thank you.
But if I get it ran from the city council, I'd be even better.
Don't fault your friend.
Thanks for telling me.
Totally, I was.
Giving us the update. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your donations as well.
There, wow, you have one more miscellaneous you said?
I just have one more. The lease agreement with the tower, Rose Hill Tower. Again, the tower is on the way to be constructed. I have to make, get authorized either enter into agreement with other Wi-Fi people or not. And that's, I think, I gave you a very crude draft last time. I think the lease license working on last I heard.
We've got, we're looking at that and some other potential things to add into that as well. I know we're going to need a little bit more time on that. I know this is reasonably time sensitive. We're trying to get it done as quickly as we can, but we want to make sure we get this right.
No problem. I just want to, well, it's up to them to authorize it one way or the other. So as long as you guys talk to each other, it's okay with me.
Maybe next time we have committee meetings, we'll have.
I would think, yeah, I would say we should be able to have it by then for sure.
Okay. I, I had, the Athens Uptown Business Association has been discussing placement of signs, two different kinds of signs. One that'll be hopefully eventually on Court Street, kind of like a mall, but something nice that indicates what's on the street and how to locate. But they're also asking for some directional signs to the Uptown Business District or something along those lines. And so perhaps at the next future planning development committee. And they're also asking for placement of benches on different locations along Court Street. Yes.
Do they have designs proposed?
They have some designs that are similar to the same, what do we call it, streetscape that we used on Court Street? The same company, the same design. So they can bring that. As far as the signs, I'm not sure. They would, of course, want to find something that fit with the existing district.
Okay. Well, if it's okay, we can go ahead and, just for the next planning development, hope to talk about that lease and, and the signs and that possibility.
I don't know what lease, which lease?
The tower.
Rose Hill Tower.
Communication Tower.
I thought that was in the law director's hands, so I'm.
Which is thinking of.
We're going to have to look at it eventually.
Yeah. Okay. So then that's all we have for planning and development. It was more than I expected. Sorry it took so long. You know, Mrs. Thorpe can't follow. So where are your?
Just go right ahead. I'll have the transportation committee report. And we have two items that I'm aware of right now. One of them was provided to you earlier today in your mailbox, and it's a report from the RJM Engineering Company. And it is for an estimate for repairs to Grosvenor Street. The report, just a very brief summary of it, gives some background information that this slip, or at least the reporting of it in the city dealing with it, dates back to 1984. And then, and that was done by the HC Nutting Company. In 2003, the Professional Services Industries, or PSI, did borings and at that point made a recommendation for some drilled piers and concrete lagging and retaining wall. And the report prepared, the current report submitted to the city by the RJM Engineering Company recommends that he believes that this lineal 253 feet of drilled pier and concrete lagging retaining wall is the best solution for Grosvenor Street. And he thinks it'll provide for stability for continuous curb and sidewalk along this area. And as he describes the process, the firm would perform a field survey. They would develop a preliminary site plan. They would do a final set of construction drawings for purposes of obtaining bids. And then they would provide bidding phase services, which would include review of the bids and recommendations. And with the report came then an estimate for their engineering services, which would be, the engineering design cost would be $34,000 with an estimated construction cost of $304,000. You may have noted in earlier committee meetings, we had information from Andy Stone, who said that he was pursuing the possibility of a FEMA grant. And I believe he's still in the process of finding out about that. So that may be able to actually help with the construction costs.
I noticed that the construction estimate says the construction would take approximately I'm wondering if all things moved full speed ahead, is this something that could happen this construction season or are we talking about 2009?
You got, you got about $372,000?
That's pretty fast, yeah.
Right. This is really planning for 2009.
That's what I thought.
Initially, as Chris indicated, the initial request before tonight is for committee discussion is whether we go forward with having the preliminary design engineering. 13,600 will do the borings and the surveying, and the wall design would be the phase two of the 20,400.
Is it, we have one evaluation, is it worth getting another one or two? We have, we have a proposal to put a wall and, which sounds good to me, but I don't know. We don't have anything to compare that to.
Except that it would be based on best engineering practices. Andy did indicate that he felt that RJM's proposal was reasonable in terms of costs regarding engineering firms that we've worked with. When we go to submit for a grant, we will need some form of different engineering, and possibly, you know, even just the initial, but we'll need something, I think, when we come back and say, yeah. The reason this was provided was based on council's request to, what can we do about this?
I know, yeah.
Since it was '84, it's probably time, don't you think?
It's creeping up on us, yeah.
And RJM did the other ones in my neighborhood in the subsequent period, and they've all stayed, I think.
Other ones.
Until they go again. Joneswood, Columbia, 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 Joneswood, Joneswood. They've all had multiples and they've stayed.
Well, and we've worked with RJM, I know, I know on several occasions, more than several, and the work is satisfactory, this just seems to be a pretty large and longstanding problem. I would just ask him the question.
The one by, the one on Joneswood by, where they had the water line break a couple weeks ago where the fire hose got, fire plug got disconnected from the water line, that one was not quite this expensive, but I don't think it's nearly this long. So, you know, I think that if we wait another, how many years has it been? Another 25 years, it'll probably be five times as much. So I'd encourage us to go ahead.
Any other questions or comments about this report?
So shall we plan on an ordinance for next week?
That's the request.
Engineering?
And we could look at the budget too and see if there's money. If that's not appropriate. I mean, since that would be a council vote. That's all we have.
Okay.
Thank you.
I heard that.
Innovations, imagine.
We're not charging them.
The second item is an update about a transportation task force meeting that occurred this past, last week, Thursday, May 8th. And several people from the city, Paul and Paul and a person from the transportation department, Melissa, Andy Stone was there, Alahu. And we talked about four or five items. And just to keep you up to date on what we're looking at, one of them is a dump the pump initiative, which will take place on June 21st, we hope. And we're working with a student-based group, it's called OU Impressions. And so we'll be working on some publicity on that. We'll have comments, suggestions, ideas. We'd love for you to forward that to us. It's primarily a student-run event, and we'd like the city to participate as much as we can. We received updates on the Athens Transit and OU Transportation, talking about long-range ways that we can work to make them more efficient and for the groups to cooperate and collaborate in ways in the future. And we'll be looking at those. We also looked at pedestrian and bicycle safety, and we'll be establishing a subcommittee for that group that will have meeting, we hope, within the next two weeks. We're also going to be looking at 24-hour parking regulations. And we do have a subcommittee that's forming to meet, to discuss that and to move forward with that, hopefully yet this year. And then that task, the transportation task force, will be meeting again on June 12th. And they'll be looking at the review of the city comprehensive plan and the Athens County Land Use Plan as they relate to transportation issues. So if anybody's interested in attending that, we'd encourage you to come join us in the discussion. So we have lots of work cut out for us. Yes.
What's the time and location of the June 12th meeting?
10, 10 o'clock in the morning in the city conference hall, chamber, city conference room.
I think we call it the mayor's front conference room, or Athens city front conference room. We're not meeting in the downstairs front conference room?
Okay.
That's.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Any miscellaneous items for the transportation committee? Okay, I'm finished. Thank you.
All right. Environment committee is, I just have one item here. I had a couple of other things that I was going to mention, but I might save those for another day. I had a meeting last week with Brad Couch. He is from an organization called Clean Fuels Ohio. This is in regards, this organization is a statewide group that their mission is to help local governments, other organizations reduce pollution, obtain more efficient, obtain a plan for more efficient vehicles. They do a number of things related to that. One of the ideas that they said we could do here in Athens very soon is there's an EPA clean diesel initiative for this region of the country. And this provides grants of up to $100,000 per year for, well, I guess it's just one cycle here. So grants of, in the range of $100,000 to do a number of things to reduce pollution from our diesel vehicles. One of them is, is adding a retrofit filter to older vehicles, another one. One of them is adding a retrofit filter to older vehicles. Another one is actually replacing older engines with newer ones. There can be a match cost to this. There isn't necessarily. But basically, and with the blessings of the mayor and the Safety Service Director, I hope, I will be presenting them with a list of our diesel vehicles, and they will provide recommendations on the most cost-effective plan that could be submitted as part of this initial proposal for this grant. So, this is very much in the works, and I hope that we'll be able to work with this group on this and also on future things. They're bringing up a Green Fuels program for Ohio sometime this summer. So, hopefully, we'll be able to jump on that and get some direction and some assistance from them as we move forward on our plans for that locally. So, this is really just an informational session or spiel here that I'm giving you. Hopefully, this will come up to council in the near future. The proposal deadline is June 12. And that's, like I said, that's for an initial proposal. And then, it doesn't say when they'll get through those proposals, but if we're selected for a full application, then they will let us know. One of the benefits of working with this group, Clean Fuels Ohio, it's a totally nonprofit organization. One of the benefits is they can administer the grant. They can do -- put in the application for us. They can do all that work for us. So, we don't overburden anyone in our city administration here with that. So, if anyone has any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, just look for that coming up for -- with more details the next two to four weeks here.
In the interest of notification here, I don't know whether it falls on Transportation or Environment. I know we're slated for acquiring two buses this year, more likely diesel buses. It's part of our transportation grant. It's in our cycle this year. Of course, the next question, Kyra, is, you know, will -- if this is June -- I don't know what the deadline is for the buses to be acquired or bid on. And I think Chris and you, Alahu, should probably talk to Melissa about this and find out.
Sure.
Again, I'd hate to see we buy a bus and have to retrofit it for something emission-free. Or, you know, that the fact is if we hold off a month, we could get some kind of, you know, some kind of extra boost for what we want to buy.
That's a possibility, although that would delay us getting the buses. If we were to purchase a newer -- I'm assuming these are new. Did you say they were new?
New buses. They'll be the small buses.
Those diesel engines are clean enough already that they would not really be applicable for anything in this area.
Okay. So, it's not up to mix, I see.
Yeah. So, when I get a list of all the diesel vehicles that might benefit from this, I will forward them to Clean Fuels Ohio, and they will pick through which ones would actually be applicable in this area.
Okay. And Chris, I'm just -- I was just barely aware of this this morning. When I went and walked in the office, and Melissa's got a picture of a diagram of a bus. So, that's why...
I'll follow up with Melissa then to find out additional details.
I think the discussion was whether they could get better suspension, rigid suspension or less rigid, and whether they want to get bike racks on before we order them. I guess the dialogue was they're not built yet. We have to order them and then build them from scratch. But the question arises, we can build them better, or we can actually incorporate some of this money, or what designs we want. It'd be nice to get that rolling as soon as possible.
And I know the Advisory Task Force commented that they would like to see the bike racks on the buses whenever possible. So, if we can get them, and they're being constructed, that would be great.
Well, this will swap out one of the older ones, which will have a bike rack on already. They'll swap out the one that's loaned from the, what is it, State Park of some kind that does not have a bike rack at this point. So, we still have to go up on the bike rack.
Okay.
Just so you know.
And I will certainly make sure that the administration's aware of any development with this at all. And so, I'll make sure that you're CC'd on any communication with this.
Okay. Thanks.
I will hold back on the other two items that I was going to discuss until Melissa can leave. So, we're done.
Finance and Personnel really doesn't have anything to discuss. I think Member Bain has a quick announcement to make about an issue that we hope will be on the agenda soon.
Next, council meeting, we'd like to have an executive session to discuss a proposal for salary increase that we would like to implement. We'd like to discuss it first amongst ourselves. And that's what we would like to do this coming up for the 1st of July. So, we'll have to hustle to get it done. It will -- the outlines are probably a flat amount of money equally amongst the people. And that's as far as we'll go tonight.
I may have another personnel issue to discuss in that executive session as well. I'll make sure to talk to you before party.
Okay. So, that would be on Monday. So, we could get it out for reading on the tour after you do our tour of the wedding park or the celebration park. We can file there today.
We could do that. Paul?
I have two miscellaneous. One is the, we need some funds appropriated to the Manfields House Fund. I think that's 902 for some repairs. I guess there's some money in that fund line, but it's not appropriated, if I understand correctly. The other one is the, there's been a request for the paint program, which we need to appropriate money for that eventually. I'll get you the numbers if need be, but I thought that was a good program to keep up. So, that's the other issue. That would be something, and I know we had the work session for graffiti last Thursday. And you start saying, okay, where do you -- how do you put something together for this? Realize the paint program is for enhancing houses and everything of that nature. This would be where you start looking and saying, okay, we're going to end up in a fund line for graffiti or graffiti kits for cleaning things up. This is probably where you'd want to look to eventually. Not that I want to boost the amount of money going in there. I think normally we've been adding, what, $10,000 to $15,000, if my memory's correct. But I may be wrong on that. I'll look at the past practices and where the money came from.
And we also had income requirements on it.
Yes, we did.
Which would not be the case with the cleanup kits, right?
Yes. Again, I'm just looking at fund lines rather than actual programs. You'd have to establish what guidelines you want for a graffiti program from scratch. And those are the only two things I can think of right now.
As we close, we could say that I handed you two, everyone, and I have for the mayor and the service director, a proposal for extending the garbage contract for up to a year. And it's very, I think, devastating. And that will be up for first reading unless we hear anything, because as you know, we have a time history.
Nancy, in that term, too, I'd like to do a change of Exhibit A somewhere along the line. I don't think that's steep enough in terms of cost. This, you did the first reading on 06208.
Sure. We've been circulating a change already. This is only based upon service, and it could be changed the 1st of July. This is only to pay and to gather together enough money to pay the demonstrated cost difference between Roger gave us, 1906 and 2008 projected. And he projects $80,000 of additional cost for diesel. Welcome to the world of energy changes.
Mm-hmm.
$80,000. Could we do the garbage trucks on diesel?
Actually, that could fall under that grant.
But anyway, that's -- this is the...
This is just a roll over.
Roll it over until we get it solved. And we can increase it beyond that. We were looking for about $80,000. And the dumpsters, just basically the amount of service to, you know, not increase landfill fees, which will certainly go up, anything like that, just to cover it.
Okay. Yeah, looking at the, your Exhibit A...
The new one or the old one?
The new one, I guess, would work just as well.
Because I didn't want the -- one isn't expanded outward. So, the new one has only the month for...
The price per week?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. That's the one I'm looking at. Essentially, I guess where I'd like to see an increase in that is actually in the frequency of pickups per week. You know, realize if you have, in general, a packer truck going to landfill, you know, this addition's $3 per frequency. So, in other words, if you're doing it, you know, three times a week, that's three trips to that.
Well, why don't you just write them out and give them to Debbie, because we'll be happy to do it. I don't know how many. Last time when we went over this, we -- there were very few that fit into those categories.
Okay.
And we could increase them additionally as soon as we know what the true cost will be. You know, if, for example, you would change configurations, it seems self-evident that we would have to increase the number of pickups and that, you know, that would be something that flows out of new policy developments. All this is designed to do is make enough money to cover the increased cost of diesel.
I'm aware of that. Okay.
Okay. And the other thing is, and I don't know if it's enforced, as I was looking at Schedule A, I was surprised to see that we are supposed to charge $12 for each -- per month for each user of a -- and that wasn't mine. That was in there already, for each user of a dumpster, in addition to the base charge.
I thought that was part of the base charge.
Well, I mean, the base charge, if you have five or seven units using the same dumpster, they pay $84, plus they would divide up the dumpster charges.
Oh, okay.
That's what it says there. And I don't know if it's implemented. But in fact, when I asked Debbie to go down and ask you, is this something we're charging for? I don't know the answer.
I don't know the answer, too. I don't know if I was...
And I remember spending several, many hours going over this with you, and I didn't even think of the $12 part. So, more things to work on by town. Fundamentally, stopgap, and then maybe a wonderful new plan in the future. Are we adjourned?
I have a few more findings.
Yeah.
I'm not exactly sure how to bring this forward, but when I was enjoying french fries Friday night, I noticed some -- a street truck was driving around with two employees, and their job was to pick up horse manure. And I know there are benefits to having horses that the police can use, and sometimes they bring in them from other departments. But I would like to know the cost to us to have that. And because basically, if you look at the condition of our streets, and if we're paying street crews overtime, how much is this costing us? And is it worth the trade-off?
That was the equine excrement removal team. We call them ERT. They requested to come in because we had 13 additional mounted patrolmen who were here for training, who then participated in crowd control and other issues in clearing the streets free of charge to the city. There was one individual receiving overtime, and the other individual in the truck volunteered. So...
Likes horse manure, does he?
He previously was not exempt in the classification. So, in the past, he did indeed receive overtime.
Were there only two?
He volunteered.
There were only two?
Yes, there were two.
Thanks. Thanks, Paul.
Or we could have left the...
They must have the...
...ERT on.
Which does make sense.
That has happened. It would blend right in with the blue and red cups all over the street on Palmer. Still this morning.
I thought most have been taken up. I don't know.
Okay. No more miscellaneous?
We're done.
We're done.